No, 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 this is for you. I'd like to make a motion and go back and open session.
A second, please. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are returned from closed session. In the closed session, the county approved motions to, number one, authorize a limited waiver of attorney-client privilege in case number 111-CVO8953 pending in the State Circuit Court for the 11th District, St. Charles County Circuit Court. And number two, we also approved an authorization and delivery, an execution, to authorize execution and delivery to Leckie Gas Company of utility easements along Pittman Hill Road and next to Muirfield Platt III as ordered in case number 411CV01766 pending in the Federal District Court for the Eastern District of Missouri. So those were two things that we discussed and approved in the closed session. Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the St. Charles County Council. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance from Joe Brazel. Please stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Elam.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Good. Okay, next on our agenda is public comments. This allows speakers to approach the council on any topic. However, once a topic is open for discussion, only six speakers total will be allowed. Each speaker has a limit of three minutes. And please remember to fill out a speaker's card so we'll have your name on the records. Okay? Public comments, please. Mr. Deanoff.
Mr. Chairman, AC Deanoff, county resident. Good evening, everybody, and happy belated 4th of July. This is a very sad day indeed in the state of Missouri, in St. Charles County. It's unbelievable to me that large corporate cellphone towers, telecommunications companies, and our governor, along with our contingent of delegate from St. Charles County legislatures, sold us up the river and trampled on our local controls and rights of our planning and zoning process with our local county government, St. Charles County, and the five municipalities and our other cities, towns, and villages of the county. It makes me sick to the stomach that large corporations that have billions of dollars have bought off our contingent of legislatures in St. Charles County and across the state to pass House Bills 331 and House Bill 345 that lay before the governor. I had put together a resolution that I filed with the county council and the chairman on Friday, and unfortunately, I was told on Friday by the aide to the county executive that the governor sign these two important bills into place, giving it into the telecommunications companies for the governor's next campaign trail or campaign office. We, as a county, need to stand up to these companies because it's just not right. These bills, House Bill 331 and House Bill 345, are now laws and are unconstitutional, and I am calling for us, as a county, to file an immediate injunction to stop the laws from going into effect on August 28th. We need to file a lawsuit to stop these bills from going into law. I will stand up, and I will put my name on and be the plaintiff, if you so choose. Our 400 residents come first and foremost, in all matters, in any causes before this county, along with every other county, city, town, and village across the great state of Missouri. People always come first over politicians and over telecommunications companies. I'm calling for St. Charles County, the Missouri Association of Counties, the Missouri Commissioners Association, the Missouri Municipal League, the Missouri City County Management Association, and other groups to band together to fight these unconstitutional laws and fight the telecommunications companies, Sprint, Verizon, US Cellular, and so on. I would like you, as elected officials, to please contact me with your thoughts, suggestions, and proper ways in which we need to proceed to stop the intrusion and violation of our local control over zoning and planning decisions that are inherent rights granted by the state legislature and the state statutes. These are for local control and local decisions. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to overturn this outrageous and unconstitutional legislation. It affects property values, it affects all our residents, it affects the quality of life here in St. Charles County. We need to build and put together a very strong consortium to fight hard for all of us in St. Charles County and across the state of Missouri. I ask that this county council take the measures to instruct the acting county counselor, Mr. Ellis, to prepare a lawsuit to file in circuit court to start this challenge and not allow the law to go into effect on August 28th. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments on this particular subject? Okay, seeing none, any other public comments on any other topic? Mr. Deanoff.
I just have a housekeeping measure that I would like to bring to the administration's attention. It's been going on for close to a year now. At the county election authority on Turner Boulevard in St. Peters, it's a continual viatal and hostile work environment. There's a section on the first floor, when you walk into the entrance of the election authority offices, where the windows on the panel have been leaking, and they got into the carpet, they got into the drywall, and they have created mold and a smell that can't get, that nobody can get rid of. Unfortunately, these election official, election employees have been put at health risk, and there's some safety concerns. They've now, since a couple weeks ago, been moved to the second floor. The carpet has been ripped up, I'm sorry, two months ago, the carpet was ripped up. But the problem still has not been solved by our facilities department. We still have mold inside the drywall and inside the part of the building that will affect the public and the employees at large. I'm asking that we take whatever measures to finally cease and put this to bed and make the proper repairs. My suggestion is that the facilities department, if they don't have a window installer, to contract out a proper window person, take out the entire window on that side of the wall, strip it, you know, re-prepare it, and reinstall those windows and caulk them properly to stop the leak when it rains from the water coming in. For this to go on for close to a year is, I don't know what to say. I know that the facilities department and Mr. Crisler don't get along. I know when the facilities department come out on a work order, they're to do a certain task, and Mr. Crisler wants another 10 things done. But this has to do with public safety, the employee's safety, and their health and welfare. And I think when we talk about mold and this vital and unconscionable work environment that's going on at the election authority, we, as an administration and county, need to stand up and take whatever measures are necessary to avoid a 17th lawsuit. As you all know, the county is being sued several times in county circuit court from election employees, and I think we need to be proactive and preventive. And for this leak in the window to go on for this long that has caused some health concerns, it's time that the administration and the county council instruct whoever is responsible, the facilities department, to take the proper actions, and let's not let our asset and our public building deteriorate any further. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments on this particular issue? Public comments on any other issue? Okay, seeing none, we move on to, yes? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen of the council. My name is George Ketterman, Jr. I'm an assistant district supervisor for the highway department of this county. My district is the one that was hit by the recent tornado. I would like to ask the county council to review the decision that was made on the exempt employees overtime policy. It's my understanding, and I don't understand the exemption rule on supervisors, but it's my understanding that once a state of emergency was declared, that the exemption rule no longer applied. But on our overtime during this event, we were paid time and a half for everything we worked on Saturday and Sunday, but Monday through Friday, any overtime we accumulated was hour for hour. I don't think this was right. I don't think it follows the guidelines or the rule. I would ask the commissioners to review this decision, and if you find that the decision was made wrongly, to please change it. If the guidelines were followed, I would ask the commissioners to review this policy and possibly change it for the future so that this doesn't happen again. Myself and all the other supervisors and assistant supervisors worked hard, 12 hours a day, 17 straight days, without stop. With few exceptions, every man was there doing his job. All we tried to do was serve the citizens of our county the best we could, and that we were, the supervisors, were only paid straight time for a portion of the overtime just wasn't right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this particular issue? Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on now to the oral report from our county executives.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Next, I'd like to kind of entertain a motion here to kind of move on to the resolutions, and then we'll come back to the consent agenda, because I know there's some discussion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we will now consider the resolutions for, resolutions 1305, 1306, and 1307.
Resolution 1305, sponsored by Councils Hall, a resolution honoring the Lutheran High School Class II Track and Field Lady Cougars, and congratulating them on their success as the Class II State Champions, AAA Conference Champions, and Class II District Two Champions in 2013. Whereas the St. Charles County Council is pleasured, is pleased to recognize and honor the achievements of local high school sports teams who have accomplished extraordinary seasons, and whereas the Lutheran High School Class II Lady Cougars captured the Class II State Championship on May 17th, 18th, 2013 at Lincoln University in Jefferson City, Missouri. And whereas the Lady Cougars were also State Champions in the 4x800, 4x200, and 4x400 relay races. And whereas this is a first State Championship for the Lutheran High School Girls Track and Field Team, and their excitement over their ongoing success throughout the season clearly propelled them through to the final victory. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the St. Charles County Council hereby honors the Lutheran High School Class II Track and Field Lady Cougars on their outstanding season for 2013. Section two, the St. Charles County Council further congratulates the Lutheran High School Class II Track and Field Lady Cougars for their feat of attaining the Class II State Championship title for 2013.
Thank you. I'd like for the members of the Lutheran Track and Field and the coach, athletic directors, to come on up. Please come forward. First of all, on behalf of the county, we would like to congratulate you, very, very proud of your accomplishments, and in order to do that, we have the resolutions, we have individual resolutions for each member, and the coach is an athletic director. And if you'd like to come forward and maybe have someone say a little something, we'd appreciate it. Who's? Coach Carter, looks like you.
Well, I would just like to say that we probably have one of the best coaching staffs in the state of Missouri, and the girls have worked very, very hard past few years, even though we have one freshman sitting up here. Most of the girls were juniors, and they will be back next year. So all I can say is, repeat.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution 1305, a resolution honoring the Lutheran High School Class, High School Class II Track and Field Cougars, and congratulating them on their success as the Class II State Champions, AAA Conference Champions, and Class II District Two Champions in 2013. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Thank you.
Resolution 1306, sponsored by Councils Hall, a resolution honoring the Lutheran High School
Class II Boys Golf Team, and congratulating them on their success as the Class II State Champions, AAA Conference Champions, Class II District Two Champions, and sectional Champions in 2013. Whereas the St. Charles County Council is pleased to recognize and honor the achievements of local high school sports teams who have accomplished extraordinary seasons, and whereas the Lutheran High School Class II Boys Golf Team captured the Class II State Championship on May 14, 2013 at Nixa Country Club in Nixa, Missouri. And whereas the Cougars are also AAA Conference Champions, Class II District Two Champions, and sectional Champions. And whereas the Lutheran High School Class II Boys Golf Team's excitement over their ongoing success throughout the season clearly propelled them through to the final victory. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the St. Charles County Council hereby honors the Lutheran High School Class II Boys Golf Team, their, on their outstanding season for 2013. Section two, the St. Charles County Council further congratulates the Lutheran High School Class II Boys Golf Team for their feat of attending, attaining the Class II State Championship title for 2013.
Thank you, Donna. Would the golf team and the coach please come forward?
Again, we would like to congratulate you for a person who is a fairly pathetic golfer in his own right. Try very hard, though. You know, this accomplishment is outstanding, and we'd like to, again, put our congratulations. And Coach, would you like to say a couple words?
Sure. Yeah, it was an exciting event for our team and also for our school. I would like to thank and thank the city and the county. I think any victory was kind of a reflection, not only of our school community, but also the county that we represent, and I appreciate the hard work and the commitments and the sacrifices and the values that our county has that contribute to this success. So, thank you for that.
Resolution 1306, a resolution honoring the Lutheran High School Class II Boys Golf Team, and congratulating them on their success as the Class II State Champions, AAA Conference Champions, Class II District Two Champions, and sectional Champions in 2013. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
In closing, like, again, congratulate Lutheran, this was their third State Championship this year, okay, because I know we honored the girls' basketball team earlier this year, and, you know, for one high school to attain three State Championships in one year is just an incredible, incredible accomplishment. So, congratulations.
All right.
Resolution 1307, sponsored by Councils Hall, a resolution honoring the Francis Howell High School Class 5A Baseball Team, and congratulating them on their success as the State Champions. Whereas the St. Charles County Council is pleased to recognize and honor the achievements of local high school sports teams who have accomplished extraordinary seasons, and whereas the Francis Howell High School Boys Baseball Team captured the Class 5A State Championship on June 2nd, 2013 at T.R. Hughes Park in O'Fallon, Missouri. And whereas the Vikings are also district and sectional Champions. And whereas the Francis Howell High School Boys Baseball Team's excitement over their ongoing success throughout the season clearly propelled them through to the final victory. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County as follows. Section one, the St. Charles County Council hereby honors the Francis Howell High School Boys Class 5A Baseball Team for their outstanding season for 2013. Section two, the St. Charles County Council further congratulates the Francis Howell High School Boys Class 5A Baseball Team for their feat of attaining the State Championship title for 2013.
Unfortunately, no one from Francis Howell was able to attend. We had a little mix-up, plus they, you know, again, this being summer, most of their players are probably playing baseball tonight. So, we will certainly, you know, get the resolutions to them through their athletic director, and again, we very, very proud of their accomplishments. I believe it was their second State Championship in the last three years in baseball, and considering the fact that, you know, we here in St. Charles County all have a tremendous love of baseball, to have State Champions two out of the last three years is quite an accomplishment, so...
Resolution 1307, a resolution honoring the Francis Howell High School Class 5A Baseball Team, and congratulating them on their success as the State Champions. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, we will have just a little recess so that you folks, yes?
First of all, an inquiry?
Yes.
If you're such a pathetic golfer, how did you become golf coach for all those years?
Well, I, it was, it was, I had to wait 25 years. I put in, I waited 25 years, and then somebody finally retired, and I was never, I never called myself a golf coach. I called myself a golf facilitator. I drove the small bus to the golf course. All right, so that was, so, thank you for bringing that up. So you folks are welcome, welcome to Levi, unless you want to stay and listen to the rest of this, you know, you're, get a little civics lesson here, but we certainly are proud of you and appreciate your attendance. Thank you, Coach.
I studied the faces of those golfers real good, because they're probably, you're probably hiring ringers for your golf gun. Put them on your four-man scrambler.
I did, yeah. So you played yesterday, Joe?
Yeah.
How'd you hit them?
Oh.
All right, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Cronin?
I would like to remove the Bromelsec Park Phase III contract under Parks and Recreation, and also I would like to remove the change order number two from the transportation for the Horner Schiffrin contract.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those to approve, to prove, removing those two items, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none. Okay. Now I need a motion to present, to approve the consent and gentified as modified.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, we'll go back to the removed items. Mr. Cronin?
The Bromelsec Park Phase III project is, it's a large project, it's a $5 million contract. I have not seen a breakdown, it's not in the council packet specifically where that money goes. I would like to know what kind of money that we are spending on renovating that older house, and I've got a lot of questions about the $5 million for this project. I think, just speaking with Councilmember Hammond, I think he has some, has some concerns as well, and I would like to probably get some additional information and maybe go out to Bromelsec. I walked out and looked at that house a year and a half ago, and it was pretty rough. And I'd like to have Mr. Hammond, with his expertise, take a look at that as well, and I'd like to consider tabling this, okay, until we have a little bit more information from Parks Director, and also Mr. Hammond, and maybe myself could go out and take a look at this project. There's a great variety of questions I have. $5 million will buy us another county park at 100 acres at 50 grand an acre. I'd be curious about how much the highway department could build roads instead of hiring it out for contractors. I would like to make sure that the renovation of this house doesn't turn into a million-dollar project, and maybe it is already a million-dollar project, I don't know, because I'm not seeing the breakdown of the financials. But the, we have, we received five pages of information, okay, on, on the Bromelsec Park Phase III. However, the pole barn, it's only $80,000, we got 24 pages of information, and I have seen no issues with the pole barn at all. It was very well explained why we needed it and what we're doing, but that's my comments on that particular project. And I'd like to make a motion to table that, if, but Betty wants to come in and, and make comments of that effect, and maybe I'd like to hear what Betty has to say.
I actually would like to hear what Betty has to say, yeah.
Sure, Betty, please.
I mean, the fact is, though, too, Joe, is this whole park process has been going on for, what, five, six years, there's been a master plan in place, and so, we bought the park, Bromelsec Parks was purchased and donated 18, I don't know, a long time ago, eight years ago, maybe?
Mr. Bromelsec had a life estate, that he maintained the 100 acres, he kept running cattle, all and such.
Right, and so, the thing is with the house, you gotta understand, when we met with Mr. Bromelsec, me, Betty, and Ortworth went out there, and we talked to him several times, part of the plan is, the house has to stay, that's, that was the agreement. So, I mean, so you understand that, that we can't just tear this house down, it's his house, and that was part of the agreement we had with Jack Bromelsec. So, but I mean, I'll let her explain it, but there's a lot more to it than just, you know, making a...
And I'm not saying yea or nay, I'm saying I just haven't received that information that you're privy to, okay?
Sure, go ahead, Betty.
Well, the bid was put out for construction. We had the engineering and design work that was done by a consultant, and we received the bid that actually our consultant had done a unit pricing estimates on construction, and actually, the bid that came in was a couple hundred thousand dollars less than what the estimated construction price would be. Typically, on these big construction projects, there is a base bid, and then we often add, have a listing of what we call add alternates, because we look at those to see if we could do them less expensive, if we could do them more efficiently, or if it's better just while the contractor's in there for them to go ahead when they have earth-moving equipment there and all the amenities that they need, just to do it. So that's, that's why we break those out as add alternates. We felt that this was a very good bid, as I say, that it came in on what the estimated potential cost could have been, it came in a little under that. We have a good, solid contractor who has been here in St. Charles County a long time. He's done several projects in the past, over the decade, of other park projects here. So we had every reason to believe that this is a very good, sound bid. There's a significant amount of earth-moving that's involved with this particular project, so it's not just simply a matter of someone who... So it's not just simply a matter of someone who builds houses or buildings to come in and do this project. It encompasses a whole lot of different types of work because of the hundreds of acres that it covers and the amenities that we're putting in. We're putting in roads, we're putting in sewer system, we're putting in electrical, we're putting in a water well. There's a, quite an array of projects, if you will, that are sub within this. So, this is not out of line for what we have certainly been paying. We've opened ten parks in twelve years. And typically, the general contractor, these are multimillion dollar projects. We have the dedicated fund that is for parks, it's for, it was passed with the concept of acquiring lands, developing them, and operating them. And that's what we're doing. We do look to have very sound construction done. We try and instill in all of our communication that we're not building these just for next year, or five years from now. We're looking for multi-generational use so that long after all of us are gone, these parks are going to be in place, and they are made, and they are built in a quality manner to last. So, we have the, we have the bid, we will go back to the contractor and get a breakdown of what they anticipate within that base bid cost. But I think we have a very sound project here.
Yeah, Mr. Klinghammer, please.
And I appreciate the work that's gone into the parks. And certainly, the contractor in this one is, has a stellar reputation. The couple things that concern me, though, and for, you know, five point one million dollars, I'm not sure what we're buying. So, you know, I'd like to see a description, when we get something like this, in the memorandum that comes from the department directors, I'd like some more information than, yeah, we opened the bids, it was five million dollars. I'd like a listing of what exactly is going to be accomplished with that, with that five million. I don't think that's too much to ask. I mean, and, and we all know, we're, we agree with you, we want quality parks. But you're asking us to approve five million dollars and there's absolutely, there's, in my opinion, there's just not enough information before us tonight to warrant an approval of five million dollars. The other question that I have is, do you know, only one, one bid doesn't, on a five million dollar contract is a little, a little unusual. Especially, now things are heating up in the economy, but still, there's an awful lot of companies that are looking for work. Can you share with us why you think there was only one, one bid that was received?
Well, I think I responded in a memo to Joanne, which I believe you did, and Joanne dispersed to the full council. I don't know why there was just one bidder. I know that there were twenty-some-odd sets of plans that were purchased to be taken, to be bid on, of which four of those, I believe, were planned rooms who had their own subscriber service. And following up with just some of the people that we thought would bid, the consultant followed up. And one in particular thought it was too large of a project for what their scope that they were used to. Several thought that they would be better served as subs instead of being the general. So, then several said that they just simply ran out of time, they didn't manage their own bid process.
Well, that's exactly what I kind of thought happened, that a five million dollar one is, is very large contract to manage. And I'm curious why it was looked at as one master contract rather than breaking it up into separate sections. As you described, a lot of them don't really, does not relate to each other. Digging a well or putting a well system in is a total different set of skills and equipment needed than, than earth moving, putting, putting roads in.
Sure.
So, what was the thought process that went into, why, why all one contract and not, you know, looking at it as separate projects to do these very different amenities to the park that, that we need?
I would equate it to, to building a house, that typically there'd be a general contractor, and then they have the electricians, and they have the plumbing and so on to come in and work under them. Because realistically, this does have to be a coordinated process. And if we bid out a water well, the roads, all separately, trying to coordinate that many contractors, I think would be unfathomable on a project this, of this scope. I know on all of our projects that we've had, at least since I've been here, and I think before then, they were bid as a whole. There was a general, and then there would be the subs working for them.
The reason I bring it up, the more time, the more opportunities you have for, for other people to bid on it, generally the price goes down. Competition breeds the most efficient way to do things. And when we, when we have projects that are such massive scale, the number of qualified bidders gets smaller and smaller as the, as the size of the job increases.
Add to that, that in part was the reason that we had the planner come in and make the presentation to the council a few meetings, well, before the bid, was to lay out for you all the complete scope of the master plan and what was going out to bid. And if we realized at that time that you didn't want us to bid it that way, we could have made adjustments, but-
Joanne, maybe I'm, I'm wrong, which has happened before, but I don't think that we talked about how this thing was going to be bid out. We talked about, you know, the projects and, and the amenities within the park that were going to be accomplished. But I don't think that there was any discussion relative to, we're going to put this together in one package.
And maybe we weren't overt enough about it. I mean, what we were laying out was what we were sending to bid. And so that, that's the reason we had the consultant come in and lay out what was going out.
Yes.
I think we did basically have done it, how we've done it for the last fifteen years, and, you know, we're always open to suggestions how to improve that. But just because there's one bid, I mean, again, we would, you know, we could have rejected all the bids and tried again. And I believe, based on the estimates, this, this bid is considerably out of that.
And I'm not suggesting, Steve, that we do that, because it puts the, the winning bidder in this case at a tremendous disadvantage. Everybody had, you know, has the numbers and has an opportunity to shoot at it. If we went out for bid at all again, it, in my opinion, it would, it should be done piecemeal rather than as, as the entire package.
And there was a second bidder in this case, it's just that they did not meet the deadline, and so they were disqualified on that, we never opened the package, so. But that's also routine, we wouldn't open a, a package from a bidder if it came in after the deadline.
Go ahead, Betty. I believe, Mr. Hammond's.
Yes, you know, I'm not opposed to the project, but I would like to see the, you know, the unit estimates that were provided, and also take a little time to look it over since we only had one bidder. Just to, for my own conscience, you know, that I took the time to look at it and make sure we're getting a good deal.
Surely.
So that's all I asked at this time.
I guess, Betty, the easiest thing to do is you send the spec, the PDF spec, right? I mean, that would be as specific as you could be with how it was bid. I mean, I don't see why we're going to get that. And then, I, I was wondering, you know, with some of Joe's questions, and since, it seems like since we started this park department and we've bought a lot of property, I don't know if a lot of these council members even know what your master plan is, maybe you need to update us in a work session or something, because I understand it. But like when Joe says five million for a park, I understand that's in the master plan, I understand what you've been doing for the last ten years. But, and how the tax works, and certain monies you can spend and certain you can't. So maybe we should do a review in a work session in the, you know, in the fall, or whenever you think, but-
Sure.
I think that's, it's important to know what the plan is and how you've been doing this, and what the tax, how it all, how much money we get in every year, and it's specifically for parks, and how we sold it to the people, and what we have to do. So if everyone understands that, you would understand that we have to spend the money on the parks and on the renovations, and-
I, I understand that, that this is one year's, almost one year's of use tax revenue, and this is enough money to buy an additional hundred acres in a council district that may, that doesn't have a county park already. So, I mean, I think there are bigger issues in how it was bid, and I just don't feel that I'm, that I have enough information as a councilman to make a vote on it. I think Dave Hammond hit it right, in good conscience, you gotta have more information to make a vote on a five million dollar project with one bidder.
Oh, I don't think, yeah, that's fine, I don't disagree.
I think that would be very valid. And, and just remembering that we do deal with very large acreages, and usually, typically, they are in, I would say, challenging parts of the county in terms of topography and such. And just as a comparison, you know, we could build a eight million dollar water park, which is what, a nice swimming pool complex and such costs now, that's used three months out of the year. So, our whole emphasis is on passive recreation, larger green space preservation, and offering some of the things that the municipalities don't have the room to offer.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I would like to hear from Mr. Morgan, he's, he's here tonight, he's a project manager, construction manager, if he, if the council would like to hear from him.
Mr. Klinghammer, to kind of answer your comment, it's a very good one. It's one social responsibility, I mean, you find out that works best. If we have seven, eight, ten different subcontractors acting as a general contractor, we're going to hire somebody to monitor all this the whole time. As a construction manager for the county, I can't be out there every day, all day long, to, to do this project, to run it like that.
Correct.
So we'd be hiring somebody to do it anyway. You've been on enough projects where guys start getting in each other's way, pin fingers start pointing, everybody starts complaining, nobody gets along, the project extends out forever. So, my, my true feeling is, one social responsibility, one guy to go to, to answer all the questions in the projects such as this size, is the best way to go. I know it cost us money, but the aggravation of money spent down the road the other way is going to be greater, I think, through my experiences.
Okay. Yes.
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Hammond will remember, we used to have a full-time construction manager. And we basically eliminated that position, asked Rocky to pick up, you know, around the edges and do some of this. But yeah, I mean, if we're not going to hire a construction manager, we're much better off having a general, I think is the-
I think we are, anyway.
And you, and you've done, you've, you've served that purpose on, on several smaller projects.
Yeah.
This, this one is, is much bigger.
It is, and the bigger the project, the more important it is to have one person and responsibility in charge of, and to run it for all the organization. And then, I mean, Dave, you've been in the industry a long time, Joe, you have too, I have also. We've seen the ups and downs of different organizations put together with different contractors. It can be a nightmare, it can go smooth. And if you get the right GC on the job, organizing the subs, it goes pretty smooth that way. And this is too big and too important a project not to do that, I think.
I think I'd just feel a lot more comfortable about it if we, you know, just scrolling through on the, the very next item, we know exactly what we're buying, we know what, what the money's being used for, and on a five million dollar one, we got virtually no information. And then, you know, like Joe already said, we're building a pole barn, but I can look at it and see exactly what we're buying. The information that we were given tonight is, is, it's, it's pretty sketchy.
Yes, Mr. Cronin, do you have one more comment?
I mean, just, just, you know, and Rocky, you may have changed since, I've, I've generalled some projects myself, both commercial and other stuff, but general contractor fee is usually somewhere in the vicinity of ten percent, okay? On a half a mil, on a five million dollar project, that's five hundred grand. And I know that there, Parks does do some construction projects on their own with Parks staff. What's the odds of having a Parks person elevated to a Parks person in charge of building projects and having that person overview, overview that project? Just, just a, just a suggestion.
That's a vegetarian, I remember.
And that's a good suggestion, Joe. That'd be kind of like putting me in charge of your Parks Department.
I don't think, I don't think Betty's gonna-
I'm not qualified for it, so you wouldn't want me with your Parks bins.
But, but I mean, I mean, there's other projects that the Parks does, I knew they had got some construction talent within that department.
And we're lucky we do, we do, the Parks guys do a lot of small things, I mean, within the Parks. They do a lot of small things, because they call us out there, they ask us to look at things, we review plans for them, for them to be their little projects, we're happy to do it. Something of this nature, even a half million dollars or larger, it's out of the realm for these guys to handle out of the Parks Department. They're, they're not experts in this field. They're handymen, for the most part, but they're not experts. And, and you and I know, you're getting some big money, you need people that know what they're doing, or it just ends up being a total disaster. And I think you have a very good point. I want more detail with what is being spent now. That's a very good point, I agree a hundred percent on that, you guys.
Okay, I believe we do have a, a motion to table this, and I believe there was a second, is that, is that correct?
It didn't get a second.
I didn't get a second?
A second.
Okay, we just got one there. So I, I think that the next step would be to, to vote on whether or not we should table this issue with the idea of just getting, you know, getting more, you know, more, you know, questions answered, and clearing up some, some uncertainties that's, that some council people have. Okay? So I have a motion, all those in favor to table this particular item of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now, Joe, was there, was there a second item that you had?
Yes, I have some questions for Mr. Greifsu regarding the Horner Schifrin change in order. Thank you. I read everything in these packages pretty carefully, and I was buzzing through this last night, and I saw that this contract was essentially for the design of a one-way service road from Bellew Creek Road to, near Bryan Road by Fort Dunell State Park. Knowing that some of the, I have contacts with O'Fallon Aldermen on a pretty regular basis, because frankly, I get more information on county road projects from O'Fallon Aldermen than I do as a county councilman, especially with the Deer Creek Project, they keep me pretty well up to it. So, they mentioned some time back that they weren't, they weren't sold on this idea of one-way service roads, and in fact, they, there was some mention of opposition. So I took it upon myself to call Steve Bender, the, I guess, head engineer with the city of O'Fallon, and I asked him straight up, I said, "Mr. Bender, is your city okay with this?" And he said that, I guess, Transportation Department had met with the mayor of O'Fallon, the president of the Board of Aldermen, and actually missed, had met some with a lot of the Aldermen in O'Fallon, and they were good with that. And, and if O'Fallon is good with it, I'm good with it, okay, as far as the city goes. But then I also called a longtime businessman on that outer road, and Steve knows him, I called Lou Friend, and I said, "Lou, have you been contacted any at all about these one-way service roads?" And Lou has an office condo, condo there with about six different tenants in it. And he said, "No, I have not." And I, my comment on this is, if you want to do these one-way service roads, I understand that, and if you got the cities behind you, fine, but either the city or the county needs to follow the lead of St. Peters and contact those affected businesses and landowners in O'Fallon and tell them what this is the first step of those one-way service roads. Whether or not they like it or not, and whether or not the county does, does them or not does, and we're spending a half a million dollars for the designers tonight, so I'm assuming we're proceeding. I think those folks have the right, and I think they have, we should show them the, the courtesy of explaining to them this project, okay? And that's, that's my comment for it. And I don't, I can tell you that those businessmen don't know anything about it, I think it's a lot smoother transition when you do a project like this, if you inform those people a little bit. So I'd like to hear your take on all, at least what I, what I found out today.
No, I appreciate the comment. This is, the cost is nearly a half million dollars, as you pointed out. What this half million's buying the county is that public engagement and the environmental process that's required to take this project up to design. So we're not actually committing to design the project, we're not committing to build the one-way outer road in O'Fallon. What the council's approving today is to take a concept that's been developed by the county's Transportation Department, working with the city of O'Fallon, as you mentioned, Steve Bender and his staff, and that we've taken to their mayor, and their mayor's taken to their board to get some, some buy-in. They've also went and, and did a poll of some of the business owners, not all of them, just to kind of see around some of these key interchanges around Route K, what would be some of the feedback. And so they have done some of that through their community development department, all in-house, internal, to get that kind of initial feel, to see- whether this is a viable option. And it's an option that's been drawn up at a very high level. Um, what these dollars, this 499, close enough to a half million dollars, is going to buy the county, is to have that true public engagement process take these concepts into a conceptual or preliminary design, not final design, but a very high-level design, yet locations of ramps, looking at grades. How is the system going to work? Some additional modeling of, of the one-way system. But that's what this step is going to buy us. If the public supports it, whether we get additional council support from both the City of O'Fallon and, and this council, and, and business owners in general over the next six months, then we'd end up having to go out for design and construction. And before any of that would happen, we'd have to secure the money for construction. Right now, we don't have that through the state, we don't have that through a federal grant like we have with the I-70 project. So, this is really setting aside the money and giving us authority to have a consultant start through some of the details, because that's the first thing that Lou Friend or any of his business owners on that quarter's going to want to know is, "Well, where exactly is that ramp going to be? Is it 100 feet this side of my driveway, or am I on the other side?" And we don't know those answers.
Mr. Mr. Bender had indicated that, that it was his, that basically, it was his recollection that he signed off on, O'Fallon, she signed off on the new diverging diamond interchanges at T.R. Hughes, uh, Highway K, Main Street, and Bryan, and agreed to one-way service roads through there. That's what he told me, at least. And if the city does want to do one-way service roads, so be it. But I think that there's, there've been a history in O'Fallon of road projects that have, and other projects that affect, uh, landowners and businessmen, where there was very poor communication. Uh, me being one of them with a downtown project where they wanted to tear up downtown O'Fallon. And because of that, there may be a little bit of a, uh, air of suspicion of the intentions of government in that region. So, I would kindly ask that, that the public, the landowners in there would be informed better of this as this project proceeds.
I agree. And, and with such a significant change of a conversation of one-way outer roads or two-way outer roads, and, and O'Fallon, part of it, there's just no outer road on the south side at all between T.R. Hughes and, and almost a Bryan Road, so it's a new outer road. And how's that going to affect businesses? How's it going to affect traffic circulation? How's it going to affect the school district that's there? These long-term stakeholders, Lou Friend's head office there, as long as I can remember. Um, those are the type of conversations we have to have on a one-on-one basis. I agree with that. And we need to be able to have the expertise of a consultant to kind of get some of that information out on, uh, websites and other support. And that's what this $500,000 to go for, is to try to build that public engagement process, get us through the, there's a lot of steps associated with changing access on the federal highway and interstate. So, we have a lot of work with federal highway and MoDOT to get this project, uh, supported by those agencies as well as the public. We're a long ways from construction, we're a long ways from getting this funded. This is just really that first step of getting us closer to an interchange. And you are correct, Mr. Bender, they had a nearly $7 million secured farm improvements at Route K, uh, a concept that the city came up with, and they, they went through a public process, that as we start talking to them about the economic benefits of one-way outer roads, and the better traffic circulation, and how you can give visibility plus additional drivers onto the outer roads, they realized that the solution that they already had partially funded was not the right solution for their city. And so, they have come to us to asking for support, and that's why this is that next step of helping the City of O'Fallon get to where they want to be.
I thank you for your explanation. I'm fine with this now, but all I ask is that we be informed, especially, it's in my district, okay? Those outer roads on North 70 from Mid Rivers to Forest Dell are in my district, and, and also that the process be open and transparent to the, to, to the folks that are affected by the project. But thank you for your time, and I, I'm, I'm fine with supporting this now.
And if you hear that the process is not transparent, or a business owner that has a concern, feel free to have them give me a call directly. I'd be happy to meet with any of the property owners along the corridor during this process, if they're not getting information from our consultant or the city, um, that they feel is, that they need during this process.
O'Fallon had meetings on the, the K-70 interchange. I was at them, and maybe a, a O'Fallon Town Hall meeting with county staff and city staff might be a good way to approach that.
And I think it'd be, and like I said, I'd like us to be able to get a little few months down the road with a consultant, so that we can have some modeling, so we can answer questions, because the first question that any business owner has is, "Where's my access? How's it going to change? How's it going to affect the drive into my thing, into my business?" And if we don't have those answers, it makes us look as if we're not prepared, and we haven't thought through the process. We just need some time to get to that point, and that's what this contract lets us do in a more professional manner.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to add, um, I think it's fair to say that, well, first of all, we got into this business of these outer roads and the improvements to the I-70 corridor, uh, in large measure because of some of the things the municipalities wanted. And we agreed to be a funding partner, and with the expectation that the municipality would be taking the lead on these projects. In the case of St. Peters, that's been largely played out. But I would add that I think John's involvement has gotten beyond what we thought originally we were going to do. Um, O'Fallon has been pushing us to get this project going. Uh, clearly, City Hall is, is the one that is most vocal and most, most supportive of these type of activities. So, I, I don't want any of you to think that this is a county-led effort. This is a municipality who directly, uh, relate to those businesses on a daily basis, as you well know, Mr. Cronin. Uh, and we wanted that communication to come at that level as opposed to the county. Uh, I, I think it's gotten a little broader than that, but, uh, this is not a John Greifsu-led project. This project is being led by the City of O'Fallon.
Mr. Mr. Cronin?
Um, a couple of things. I, I, and John, I, I applaud your explanation tonight. It was great. I understand what we're doing now. Again, though, I'm going to get back to the information that's provided to us in the council packet. Um, there was, you know, a quarter-page memo from, from you to Mr. Snar about, you know, what it is, but it did not come anywhere close to explaining why we need to do this. And you did very well tonight, and I, and I appreciate that, but it's frustrating on Monday night when you're reviewing these things, trying to prepare for the Tuesday meeting. Um, and I, I read it all twice, and I still didn't know why not, I understood what we were doing, but I didn't, the, the question before that is why we were doing it. Um, and I think that's, um, I think that's the information that we as, as council members need to know. I know you guys work in it on a daily basis, and, and to you, it's very self-evident. Um, but if you just sit back and look at the, the information that was in our packet, I could not begin to answer. If somebody asked me why we were spending a, a half a million dollars on this, I had absolutely no idea why we were doing it. I knew why we were doing it. Um, and I knew, you know, that it was coming from budget line items, such and such, which doesn't really answer the question of where the money's coming from either, when it's just referenced by a budget line number, but that's okay, we'll, we'll deal with that later. If we could, though, would, just try to, try to tell us exactly what you told us tonight in the packet, so that we, we don't have to, to sit at home scratching our head and trying to figure out, "Well, why are we really doing this? And, and should I vote yes or no for it?" But if I can't answer why, I can't answer, you know, if, if I'm in support of it or not.
Yeah, and I apologize for that. I, I blame my engineering professors in college. You know, the engineering part of me always is, fewer words the better. Explain the project. Explain why is something I think an engineering career, career program, we just, we don't do well on. I constantly ask our PR folks to help me explain why as we try to, as we go through even our tip process. We build, we look at so many different road projects, and we know they're important for different reasons, but explain them why in a simple terms. Yeah, like I said, I go back to my engineer professors, I just blame them for, but I will do a better job on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I've got to take issue with that. This guy's one of the best communicators we have. And, and I just want to make sure I understand. What, what you said is, the process we went through in St. Peters, and by the way, uh, the head of the St. Peters Businessmen's Association wrote me an email the other day applauding the way you've worked with them, trying to, trying to work out some of those questions. The process we started in St. Peters, we're, we're going to follow that, basically that same pattern with O'Fallon?
Correct. This is the beginning stages of going through that public engagement process, of getting the poll of the, of what the business owners think, that we take, that we spent, you know, essentially a year with it in St. Peters. We're going to try to do that a little bit faster in O'Fallon. We learned that we needed to have some of these answers before we went to the public. That's one of the things that we, we got beat up so much on the St. Peters project, and let a lot of, um, rumors. It just, you know, you get out there an idea that you're, you're kind of broad, and then there's a rumor starting, and you're fighting, trying to always fight that rumor. So, with the O'Fallon project, we, we have a significant sum of money that we're trying to invest to get some of those answers first, and then go to the public once we have them. And that's why Mr. Cronin's, uh, observation that a lot of the business owners may not have the full details. They have a broad sense, but they don't know the details. And that's, that's just because of where we're at in the process.
Okay, Mr. Ressler.
John, a quick question here on the, uh, you have the original contract amount for the 1-3. Um, was that, was, I assume this was an RFP?
Yes.
All right, so was the second contract amount an RFQ?
RFQ, excuse me, for qualifications.
RFQ? So, was the second amendment, was it just an add-on, or was it part of the original, um, RFQ?
It was an add-on.
So, how do you know when you do that, that typically a 10%, 15% maybe add-ons on contracts is more realistic, but this is, this is, um...
37.
Yeah, 37% without it being bid. How do you know that $500,000, when you just say, "Well, by the way, how much more is this going to cost?" without it being part of RFQ, how do you know that that's a competitive, uh, number?
Well, we were able to compare the estimates that they provided for the work in St. Peters compared to the scope of services that were asked for in O'Fallon. And so, the RFQ process, you look for the most qualified, you know, it's based on qualifications, not based on price. And so, if we just recently did, went through a qualification-based selection process, the interviewing and the selection of this consulting team, the thought process for the very similar work, three miles of outer roads in St. Peters from Mid Rivers to, to K Springs being converted to one-way outer roads. From 79 to Bryan is about three miles, so it's very similar scope of services. We basically already had their man-hour estimates that we had from the previous project, calculated what we thought the pro, this project was valued at, and then waited to see what Horner Schiffern team came up with. They actually came in less than what they had provided for the St. Peters, because there's some, what they explained, some little bit benefit of having both projects. So, that's why we feel that this was a very competitive price for the work that they're asking, being asked to do.
Okay. Thank you, John. I believe we need to, um, a motion to approve the, uh, item that was taken and removed from the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
What, what are you going to approve? Which one?
The, to...
I thought Mike wanted more information on it.
For the Honer Schiffern.
On this one, I'm fine.
Yeah, this is the one.
The other one, we need the Parks one.
Yeah, we already, we already tabled the Parks one. Okay, so I need a second on, uh, on that.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, all right, next on the agenda is a, uh, introduction of an emergency bill number 3985.
Emergency bill number 3985, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the City of West Alton for inspections and assessments of damage caused by the flooding in 2013.
Okay. County Executive, you'd like to explain just a little bit what we're...
I think the, the reason for the emergency clause is probably pretty obvious. This is just, uh, these are things that, uh, had to be done, basically, as the water was coming over the, the levee, and I apologize, we didn't have time to call a meeting, and didn't have time to call a meeting and, and, and actually, uh, do an ordinance like this. So, so in effect, we're asking you to, uh, please, uh, give us forgiveness and permission.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none?
Motion for...
Emergency bill number 3985, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the City of West Alton for inspections and assessments of damage caused by the flooding in 2013. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes. Okay. Emergency bill number 3985 passes. Uh, next is bills for final passage, uh, starting with bill number 3982, please.
Bill number 3982, an ordinance adopting a revision to the master plan of the County of St. Charles, Missouri.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance adopting a revision to the master plan of the County of St. Charles, Missouri. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes. Bill number 3982 passes. Next up is, uh, bill number 3983.
Bill number 3983, an ordinance amending the 2013 budget of St. Charles County, Missouri, as adopted by ordinance 12-096, by appropriating additional revenues in excess of those estimated in the adopted 2013 general fund budget of the Election Authority Fund.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance amending the 2013 budget of St. Charles County, Missouri, as adopted by ordinance 12-096, by appropriating additional revenues in excess of those estimated in the adopted 2013 general fund budget of the Election Authority Fund. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 3983 passes. Uh, next is bill number 3984.
Bill number 3984, an ordinance, one, authorizing the county executive to execute a ward of contracts and certified assurance documents from Missouri Sheriff Methamphetamine Relief Task Force, MoSmart, for receipt of funds from the Deputy Sheriff's Salary Supplementation Fund, and two, further amending Chapter 115 of ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to the basic pay plan for positions within the sheriff's department, and three, further amending the 2013 budget adopted by ordinance 12-096, by providing supplemental appropriation and transfer of funds to accommodate acceptance of a MoSmart grant, personnel changes, and increased concealed carry permit activity within the sheriff's department.
Questions and comments on this particular bill?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I, I took the time to read this, and I appreciate the sheriff including all the documents in the packet. And one of the things that, uh, I admire whoever wrote this grant application, they did a heck of a job, and they explained the, the pay compression issue better than any other way I've seen it explained in all the council meetings we've had on it. So, if, if you haven't read this, whoever did it, I, I assume it maybe is Lieutenant Tyfildbrun, he did a fine job, and, uh, it's a, it's a nice, uh, it's a, it's a nice supplement to the pay of the county deputies who deserve that money. And, uh, the, the explanation of why the county was deserving that money was, was, was just a, they did an excellent job on it. So, Sheriff, pat them on the back. Okay?
Any other comments? Okay. Please call the roll.
Bill number 3984, an ordinance, one, authorizing the county executive to execute a ward of contracts and certified assurance documents from Missouri Sheriff Methamphetamine Relief Task Force, MoSmart, for receipt of funds from the Deputy Sheriff's Salary Supplementation Fund, and two, further amending Chapter 115 of ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to the basic pay plan for positions within the sheriff's department, and three, further amending the 2013 budget adopted by ordinance 12-096, by providing supplemental appropriation and transfer of funds to accommodate acceptance of a MoSmart grant, personnel changes, and increased concealed carry permit activity within the sheriff's department. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 3984 passes. Next up is bills for introduction. Uh, first is bill 3986, please.
Bill number 3986, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Cronin, an ordinance of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of McCoy Creek Estates, plat two.
Okay. Questions or comments on this particular bill? Okay. Seeing none, we move on to bill number 3987 for introduction.
Bill number 3987, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permit 18883 for the extraction of topsoil to Karen Brock Farms LLC.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Cronin?
I followed this through planning and zoning, and because this site is bordered by the City of Wentzville, who I represent a good portion of on three sides, um, I sent this, this CUP application to the City of Wentzville for comment. Additionally, because this, because this, uh, this soil extraction proposal is along Prue Creek, upstream of Lake St. Louis, I sent it on to Lake St. Louis, too, because it affects their watershed. Uh, I did not hear anything back from Lake St. Louis, but I did hear back from Wentzville, and they said that this would not meet their UDO because... and they said that this would not meet their UDO because theirs is a 100-foot setback where the county's only allowing 50-foot. 50-foot's not much wider than this room. I would like to... I sent this information to Ms. Lycum and Mr. Anthony, and I think it'd be nice if we could talk to the landowner, and that's a large site. He's got 40 acres, is only using 20-some acres for soil extraction to maybe increase that buffer along Prue Creek. If you've got a bunch of... They usually take that topsoil, and they make it real fine, so it's easy to spread. We get one of these huge rains like we have, and a bunch of that mud washes down Prue Creek into Lake St. Louis. It could be an issue. But I provided that information to Ms. Lycum and Mr. Anthony, and I would appreciate if someone could see it may not be an issue for the Karen Brocks to do that.
And Mr. Cronin, just to clarify, and as I said before the meeting, I apologize because I didn't see it. I was in meetings all day, and I forwarded to Mr. Ellis as well, and I'll talk to him. But are you proposing to change the UDO to 100-foot so it's similar or exactly what Wentzville has?
Since this is a conditional use permit, can we not put that as an additional condition on the conditional use permit?
Okay, I just didn't know what you were proposing. So, it's just on this one that you're looking at?
Down the road, I'd imagine there's a good reason why Wentzville's got 100-foot, and we've got 50 along Prue Creek, and I think it's probably to protect that watershed. Maybe looking at a UDO change might be something long-term, but initially, so we don't slow up the Karen Brocks. Maybe we can just get that setback increased a little bit as a condition of the approval of the conditional use permit.
We'll look at that and be back to you.
Yes.
Wayne, could you come up here, please, a minute?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Brazel, a question? Didn't it used to be 25 until you made it 50?
I was about to get into all this. There's a long history here, but I was going to ask Wayne some questions. I mean, there's conditions. They're going to have silt fences, and they have a retention pond. Don't they have to have a retention area on this, or...
No, they don't have to have a retention basin, but they will have to provide measures like silt fences and other types of things to control the erosion. But what I will do between now and your next meeting is contact them and see if they would have any particular problems with a greater setback and let you know.
I was going to make a couple of comments. I would not be in favor of making them go 100 feet because it's taking away property rights. And I'll tell you this, the other thing, it's hard enough to have a business in this county to begin with, and all the regulations piled on top of regulations makes it harder for the business guy. The county... People need topsoil. And, you know, here's the thing, Steve, you're right. We started this setback thing, and there wasn't a setback on streams 10 years ago. And we started this whole process, Wayne, and you know how laborious it was with it. We wanted to... It was 25, or what was it? Was...
It's 25 feet on some streams and 50 feet on others.
Fifty on the major ones on Prue. Yeah. But the fact was, that was huge to get that accomplished. I mean, it was huge. I mean, the builders are all not in favor of it, and the farmers, well, it doesn't affect agriculture. So, agriculture, there is no setback. So, here's the thing, though, that ground was farmed forever. And so, the siltation is probably in a better form. What they do is they tango their tandems, and they load them up with a high lift. They leave a high lift out there, and they may run two or three loads, if that, a day out of there. And they're a concrete company, and so they use it for backfilling, things like that. But the fact is, if you're farming, which everyone does in that part of the country, there is no siltation fences, and they chew the ground all up, right up to the creek. So, Joe and I had this conversation. I said, "Joe, how is this any different than farming?" Because they're going to farm it. They don't cut up... They don't chop it up in a machine or nothing. They just put it in a high... Have a high lift come, load it in the truck, and go on with it. And they're going to have siltation fences and everything like that. So, I'm in favor of this. I don't think 100-foot setback is fair because that's not... When they bought the ground, that wasn't the law, and it's not the law, and I will never support that. But that's just my position on it.
Any other questions for Mr. Anthony? Okay, thank you, Wayne. Okay. Any other questions on Bill Number 3987? Okay, please read Bill Number 3988 for introduction.
Bill Number 3988, requested by Wayne Anthony, sponsored by Jill Brazel, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from A Agricultural District to RR Single Family Residential District as per Application 1-8895.
Okay, questions or comments on 3988?
I got a question for Wayne on this one again. I know I just went into government regulations. I don't want to look like a hypocrite here. However, I think I can make a point here. There hasn't been a... On Highway F, there has not been a subdivision, a three-acre subdivision, put in since we did the five-acre lot size, I don't believe. Because one reason, when we had the master plan years ago, you were concerned about the amount of septic tanks in that area because it's rocky.
Well, let me refresh your memory. Back in 2008, we had quite a bit of discussions about RR and where three-acre lots could potentially go. And to make a long story short, an area along Highway F had a predominance of three-acre lots or less than five, and we ended up selecting an area that's kind of bisected by Highway V and designated that rural residential for these three-acre lots. So, this zoning is consistent with our master plan and where we identified where it would be appropriate for the RR-type of district.
Yeah, I do understand that. But I just... I thought that we... I thought Highway F was pretty much the point where we decided that this is not where we're going to go with three-acre lots anymore because of the amount of septic tanks that are going in.
It's actually the reverse. Highway F was the area that we designated.
North of it?
Once you get to the west of Highway F, that's where we left it agricultural in the five-acre lots. And generally, you'll find that staff recommends against any RR attempts in that area if there are no three-acre subdivisions or parcels close by.
Since this is adjacent to an existing three-acre subdivision, why staff and plan and zoning recommend...
It is also adjacent to some other areas that already have three-acre or a little larger lots, and it is within the master plan land use area that we defined as rural residential.
Okay.
Mr. Cronin? I have a... While the subject is brought up, I have a similar situation in my district. My district is in the unincorporated area, is predominantly a lot of three-acre lots and subdivisions. I was contacted by Bill Lookenhouse, who was also representing Snyder Real Estate about a three-acre development, possible development out in Forestale, and the developers were about ready to bolt because county staff told them that they had to have five acres in that area, okay? It's out in the middle of farmland, there's no neighbors, there's no problems, and that area, I do not know of a city in my district that doesn't welcome three-acre developments, okay? I understand the issues with septic systems, but we have different soil up there, and that because it became a problem. One of the things that I am meeting with those folks on Thursday, Mr. Anthony, and I would like to maybe bring this to your attention as well. Most of the problems come with septic tanks that I've talked... I've been talking to a lot of people, and I've owned them my whole life, is with gravity, okay? Those LPP systems with the pump systems eliminate those problems because you can put the field anywhere on the property, and you have... If the field fails, you can relocate the field without digging up the old field. And I know Mr. Hammond's probably pretty aware of those, too. So, I'm wondering... I know that the five acres goes back as a throwback to the Ortworth regime, but with land costs what they are in this county, I'm wondering if we really need to stick with five acres in agricultural zoning with a nice house on three-acre lot with a properly constructed septic's not been an issue in my district, I can tell you that. So, I'd like to hear your comments on that one.
Well, what I'd like to do is send you a communication that kind of lays out this particular issue. Staff had indicated to the property owner or whoever they were talking to that the reason that the staff would recommend denial of the plant was that it was three-acre lots. And I reviewed the situation. The reason that we would deny is not that it's proposing to have three-acre lots. If a developer finds it economically profitable or marketable or whatever to do three-acre lots or 30 units per acre, that's their choice to make as long as it fits within the UDO. The issue with this particular piece of property is it's within what we've defined in our master plan as the urban service area. The urban service area is proposed to require or encourage to the greatest extent possible that people connect to sewer systems as they are brought forward and not to create the septic systems. These leapfrog septic system types of developments aggravate the economic extension of community sewer systems. In this particular location, I think there is a couple of sewer lines. I think they're about 2,000 feet away, but there are community sewers within the vicinity. Based upon our UDO, if sewers are available within the vicinity, you would not approve the plat. Now, originally, this property owner back in 2004 proposed the three-acre lots. We did not have the urban service area defined at that point in time. That came along in 2008. The original plat that they prepared in 2004 elapsed because they didn't follow through with filing a final, probably because of the economic times in 2004. And so, they... Currently, they don't have any plat approval for that particular piece of ground. So, that's kind of the history, but I'll send you some more information on that.
But the advantage of those pump systems also is it makes it very easy to hook up to sewers when they do become available in the area, okay? And I understand that the county doesn't like septic tanks, but as someone who's owned one his entire life, they're not an issue. Mine doesn't smell like the City of O'Fallon's municipal treatment plant. Mine doesn't produce all the sludge that gets spread on the farm fields across from my house and stink and pollute my pond like the City of O'Fallon's does. So, I mean, a properly designed septic system that works right is pretty self... For people that like to be self-sufficient, like a lot of people are in rural areas, is an acceptable alternative.
And it's a great system for a rural area, not for an urbanizing area.
But one more comment on that, Wayne, is I agree with Joe on this, though, too. If you have a guy that wants to develop three-acre lots, and you can't put the burden... Do we put the burden on him to go to 2,000 feet to hook up to the sewer, or... I mean, what you're doing is you're preventing people from living in a rural atmosphere, aren't you?
No, you're not preventing people from living in a rural atmosphere.
If a developer owns 30 acres, and wants to have 10 lots, and it's next to St. Paul or something, what, three acres is more predominant?
It's in an urbanizing area where sewers are going to get extended either sooner or later. An extension, a connection to those sewer systems could apparently be made now if the developer chose to do so. He could still develop three-acre lots if he wanted. We're just indicating that because of the location and being within the urban service area, that these developments, whether they're three-acre lots or five-acre lots, need to be on the community sewer system and not septic systems.
Well, so, the developer could submit, you could reject, you could still come to the council.
You have the final authority to approve.
They want, to be frank with you, they wanted to talk to me to figure my opinion of it. I have no issue. I mean, I think I speak for the majority of the towns in my district that the three-acre subdivisions in the rural areas like St. Paul, Josephville, Flint Hill, Forestale is something that's desirable in that area, and I don't want to chase those folks off. So, I'm going to meet and talk to them, and hopefully, they'll put a conditional use permit forward. But additionally, I can tell you from my own parents' experience on Lawrie Hill Road, if you have a traditional gravity system and sewers come to town, you've got a lot of problems because you've got different elevations to the gravity system. I'd almost rather see us go to three acres, for instance, in my district, but along with those three acres require the system be a pump system. I do not think that adds much extra to the cost. When I went to my sewer contractor, I told the gentleman, "I want a septic system that I'll never have any trouble with." And if sewer line does come down Half Moon Road where I live, it's... I can pump it up the hill, I can pump it down the hill, I can move it wherever I want because the system doesn't rely on gravity. So, I think maybe that's something we ought to look at, too. And I know Sandy May is really good with that in your office, so I'd appreciate the conversation because I think as the economy picks up, you're going to see more requests for three-acre subdivisions in my district, and I think we can maybe work through that so it goes a little smoother for those developers.
And it's going to be a difficult issue, I think, for us as we start picking up development. The reason that this hasn't occurred already is we've been in a slump.
Slump.
However, we really need to focus on how well are we going to plan and develop the county and not just accept maybe a subpar system that will aggravate the continued growth and development of the county. And maybe there's a different way to do it, and like you said, provides for a potential connection once it gets closer.